Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Whole Meeting for November 5, 2024. I call this meeting to order, and again, please ask the clerk to call the roll.
Trustee, Dany?
President.
Ganzey?
Here.
Gunstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Laporte?
Here.
Swansky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. Start off our meeting here at this Town Hall. If there's anybody in that chamber that would like to address the board, kindly step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and try to keep your comments. Three minutes. Anybody in the chamber want to address the board? Address the committee. Dominic, anybody online want to address the committee?
No one online.
Thank you, Dominic. Moving on to standing committee reports. First standing committee is Building and Zoning Committee Chairman Gunstein.
Thank you, President Wallace. I have one item tonight on our agenda, and it is a downtown property discussion. The village received technical assistance grants from the Regional Transportation Authority in 2015 to develop a downtown transit-oriented development plan. The TOD plan was adopted on October 18, 2016. With that, I am going to let Kristi steal the show.
going to be state changes to Bartlett's metro station. We'll no longer have this platform to the east side of Oak Avenue. This change has really prompted the reanalysis of the commuter parking lot locations. Staff anticipates demand for parking will be concentrated now on the east side of Oak Avenue, and the parking demand on the west side will decrease significantly. Metro plans to have final plans in the summer of 2025, and they have indicated that the current amount of parking provided in downtown Bartlett is adequate for their future needs.
And we believe them.
I'm going with it. So, just to give you a brief overview, I'm going to go over sites A at Oak and Western, or Western and Oneida. We'll be going over the Metro lots. There's Site C in the TOD plan, as well as Site D, which is north of Flexonics, and Site F, which is also part of the Flexonics Metro parcel. Opportunity Site A. This is a village-owned commuter lot. Currently contains 86 spaces. The village and Metro have an agreement that the village must replace these 86 spaces if this lot becomes developed. The TOD plan identifies this for multifamily, possible first-floor retail. Now, Opportunity Site F is kind of a remnant piece of the Flexonics parcel on the north side of Railroad Avenue. This is already approved for 99 spaces.
Ninety-nine?
Ninety-nine. So, this was back when Metro originally came through. So, those 86 spaces that we currently have could be relocated here. If you look, there's already curb cuts because it was planned when the Railroad Avenue extension was constructed. Opportunity Site D is owned by Metro. This was originally supposed to be a lot of parking, surface parking. Metro's indicated they would exchange this parcel, which they own, for some of the village-owned commuter lots. So, this is an opportunity site that we have that's five acres, potential for townhomes, condos, and apartments, which meets the TOD plan of getting more rooftops in the downtown.
Would it be F, Site F?
Oh, Site F. Was that F?
D was Flexonics, right?
D is this larger part of Flexonics?
Between the tracks and Flexonics.
Right. Site F is, it's still technically one parcel.
Who owns F?
F is Metro. Part of it's Metro, part of it's our right-of-way.
Who owns D?
D is owned by Metro.
So, they're willing to swap D for what?
That has yet to be determined. We haven't gone into all of the details with that yet.
They're willing to relinquish, is what we're saying.
Correct. Opportunity Site C are some of the commuter spaces that are located north of the railroad tracks, including the water tower site. Again, there's potential for this to possibly be a parking garage with mixed use, whether you have some retail, you could have multifamily. These sites could be configured completely different from what's out there, especially if that water tower is removed. So, staff is asking for direction to, so that we can meet with Metro and kind of talk about some of the specifics of what properties they'd be willing to trade with the village to get, so we could start marketing the Site D that's just north of Flexonics for redevelopment.
So, Metro is saying that they don't need as many parking spaces as we have?
Correct.
Correct. So, they are, based on their work, they feel that the amount of people using transit is not as high as it was in the past?
They had anticipated Site D originally being a need for all parking. They do not anticipate that the Bartlett station is going to anticipate that many commuters based in Bartlett.
So, currently, with all of our lots, what percentage of all of our lots on a regular basis for transit, not for after a certain hours you can park here to go to Moore Brewing, right? What percentage of all of our lots would you say is regularly full for transit into the city or to other, you know, east or westbound areas?
About two-thirds is regularly used now.
Okay. So, and if, I mean, and I'm not trying to argue for or against it, I'm just saying, is our original TOD plan still accurate based on the fact that not as many people are using Metro?
I totally think the TOD plan is the right path forward for the village for transit-oriented development. If you're having more houses in Bartlett that are using TOD, they don't have cars, they're using Metro. So, you're bringing riders there, they don't need the parking spaces. So, Metro's looked at their forecasts, and they're realizing what they had planned for Bartlett was completely overparked. You'll see, that's something that tends to be done. They always are, they'd rather have more than less. Now, they're realizing that there isn't that need. They don't anticipate that need coming due to the other stations that are there, that are on the line.
I know a lot of people that use Hanover Park from certain ends of Bartlett. It's just easier on, easier off, so.
I, for one, like the future village board actions that you've recommended here. I think that we've all studied these. I think they're well thought out. I think that that's the direction that I would recommend on the board actions as far as entering, giving the ability to enter into agreements, or not the ability, but at least present agreements with the parties involved, come back to the board and say, this is what we can do, this is what would look like, this is how we can swap this for that, and this would be the end result. This is what we'd market here, this is what we'd market here. I think that would be really a good idea. I would agree with you, Kevin.
In Site C, we'll put retail on the first floor, the parking garage on the second floor, and residents above that. So, East could move over there, play the loud music, and only go to the parking.
There you go.
Does Site C have a lot in between it that's not part of this?
It does.
Sure, or was it?
It's ComEd.
Is it feasible to acquire?
It's something we would have to talk to ComEd about.
What's there now? Oh, sorry.
Kind of divides it right in half.
Does Metro, do we have like an agreement, like they would have to sell to us, or could they be going and selling it to somebody else?
Well, we're starting the discussion. So, they have, before, say 10 years ago, there was no interest from them giving up the property that's just north of Flexonics. Now, they have changed their view after looking at the change in demand.
And the pushword out from the city?
Yes.
Their primary objective is to get people that don't own cars and ride in Metro. It's their number-one objective.
Right. And the opportunity of going from the split platform to having it consolidated really allows us to consolidate our parking locations as opposed to having to have them spread out along the entire stretch.
I like C, F, D, everything you got here except for A. I feel like we're missing an opportunity at A to expand development further down the line with what's currently the bank and the pharmacy.
So, that property owner has expressed absolutely no interest in selling. There is nothing to say that in the future we have someone that wants to come in and wants to develop that lot as well. That's something that'd have to work out with that property owner. The site plan that you see down below, that's just a concept. I can tell you right now, that's not what's going to be there. That is just kind of giving the board and the TOD plan an idea of how we want a building. We want it closer to the property lines. It's just a, it's just a concept, conceptual layout. If someone wanted to do bigger and could get more property, we'd be all for that. And the TOD plan and the downtown overlay district support that.
It didn't come to fruition, but I at one point had a discussion with some pretty reputable developers that wanted to do a U-shaped building there with retail on the bottom and condos on top in that particular lot.
Creates kind of a tile.
And then put a little like square in the middle of it. So, that's the kind of thing I could see working in the TOD plan.
But it sounds like we have better opportunities right now for the C and D areas, right?
Correct.
And I think that.
We have more.
Great opportunities.
We have more control.
And I would also say, if we worked out the agreement with Metro so that this site could be marketed even now, and put in the spaces further down, once the split platform is eliminated, I think it makes sense to do that and to start those conversations with Metro now.
And just to stay in reality, I think it would be a really good idea to, when you do that, and we have some concept of a mixed-use garage, we get an idea how much it costs because we all know parking garages are really expensive. So, we should have a Plan A, parking garage pie in the sky, and Plan B, you know, something that we can maybe turn into a parking garage someday.
Ten to $20,000 a stall.
Oh, they're more than that, I think.
Probably more than that now. That's what it was.
And I don't know about you guys, but I do not like St. Charles's parking garage.
No.
So, to acquire D from Metro, we have to trade, correct?
They said that they would do a trade. We don't know what their idea of a trade is.
Okay. So, is their trade have to be within a certain area of the train station?
I would assume they would want something downtown, yes. Their interest was in some of the village-owned commuter lots.
I think they have, they only have like a boundaries for how far they want someone to have, so.
They have that. Some of the lots that we own are technically within our right-of-way, so some of it might just be something as simple as that. But that's why we want to have the discussions with them, to see what they're willing, what they're asking us in exchange for that trade.
Yeah. And I also agree with staff's recommendation on that.
Good, good, good. How many years have we been trying to get the train station moved?
Thank you. Thank you for this.
Carbon air.
That's what we still have to figure out when that's happening.
So, works, Dan, you want it?
Metro has told us the split platform is likely to be like '26, '27.
Like done or starting?
Done. I think it's supposed to start in '26, be done in '27, but they also always throw on, you know, they're working on it, and they have a lot of things to get done and all that, so. But they're saying '26, '27 right now. That's the latest that they've told us. I think they're supposed to be coming to present, they were supposed to be this fall, so I need to follow up with them and find out where they're at. I know their engineers came out not too long ago. I met with them and walked the area with them. So, they should be, they're putting things together, so hopefully they'll be able to come here and present to you what their plans are.
I think it's.
It'll probably be like the intersection of West Bartlett Road and Route 59.
Not waiting until '27 to market this as a redevelopment. We're going to move forward.
I think so.
That's the reason why Kristi wants to get some input on the board's feelings about grab-nabbing some of this property. She's going to start designing whiz-bang things to go in there.
Right. All right. Moving on, we are going to start talking about some of the village-owned properties in downtown. The South Oak Avenue parking lots. So, the village purchased lots in 2016 and 2017 on the west side of Oak Avenue for the police parking lot, which you can kind of see at the left side of the screen, and then also on 2, what was the address? 210 South Oak Avenue, to expand the Banbury Fair parking lot. An agreement could not be reached. The village did get appraisals for all of the properties on that side of Oak Avenue. They were not able to reach an agreement with that property owner. He subsequently sold the property to a new owner who has indicated that at points that they would be interested in selling for a price that is significantly above what the appraised value of the property is. So, if there is any interest in that, there would be the cost to acquire property, cost to demolish the existing structure, and then the cost to design and construct any new parking lot in that area.
Is the appraised value different than what market value actually is?
I would say it's comparable, but again, you're looking at it for a house or a multi-tenant building.
That's the property just south of the parking lot, right in front of La Petite Pistolet.
Correct. So, it's in between the two, it's in between the police parking lot and the newly expanded parking lot.
Is there a reason we didn't put some sort of value or range in here, or do you just not want to discuss that publicly?
I think we lose our negotiation power.
Yes.
Well, I mean, just to discuss what the range is, are we talking 300 grand, 400 grand?
We were talking a lot higher than that.
Yeah. The appraised values were back in like 2015, so we would have to do new, get new appraisals for that, but.
I think that is the least amount of my interest in.
Yeah. Do we need more parking there? All right. Then, the 20, the 2004 Bartlett Municipal Center subdivision was prior to the village constructing the current village hall. It created three lots at the time. After staff has looked at this now recently, we discovered that a portion of the fire barn is actually located on Lot 1, and a portion of the south employee parking lot goes into the site to the south, where the pump house is. The village, staff has kind of looked at this and said, with consideration, staff is recommending that maybe we subdivide these encroachments to create lots so that the remnants could then be sold in the future if there's a development to the north or a development to the south. So, it's kind of a housekeeping matter. So, if you look at this on the north side, kind of showing to create this small lot where the fire barn encroaches, so that if the fire barn property were ever to redevelop in the future, the village would be able to include this site as well.
It looks like it covers the pump house, too?
Yes.
So, is the pump house owned by the fire, the volunteer fire, or is that?
No, it's ours. It's on our property.
Okay.
And then on the property of the south, the current property line is where I have the line X-ed off. We're talking about moving that property line south so that the site to the south, where the pump house is now, would be able to be developed in the future with the property to the south.
Again, this is just housekeeping. This is things that should absolutely be done. There really isn't any discussion because it's kind of gray right now. So, we have to do something. We can't just leave it like that, or we'll never be able to do anything on those lots.
Right. So, we're trying to find all these small things that we can do now so that when development happens in the future, we kind of are ready to go.
Who owns the fire barn? That's what I was, does the village own it?
The fire barn itself?
Organization.
No.
An organization, right?
It's an organization owns it.
If you move that lot line, though, that is on the village's property. It's currently the village's property now.
So, part of it, like the entrance, is currently on village property?
But by redoing this to that yellow box, are you adding value, are you adding property to their ownership?
No.
Okay.
No. The village would still have ownership of what is ours. We've just created a lot. If the fire barn develops in the future, we can put additional property with it.
Okay.
And then the Main Street Municipal Vehicle Parking Lot. So, the village currently owns Lot 15, which is really only this portion of the property. We only own a portion of that parking lot. Sanitary sewer runs through the entire south portion of Lot 16. Because of this, the small size of Lot 15, this site is very limited for redevelopment, the way that it stands now. We had talked before about possibly demolishing the building to the south and adding more parking there to move the village vehicles. I think, based on looking at the layout of this lot, it makes more sense to keep the employee vehicles on the other side of Main Street because there's not that much room for, there's not that much opportunity for redevelopment for that site itself.
Because of the sewer easement?
Because of the sewer easement. And then, as far as staff's approach for privately-owned properties, Bartlett, downtown Bartlett is made up of multiple parcels with many individual owners. Economic Development staff's routinely contacting property owners to see if they're interested in selling or redeveloping their property. Staff meets with the property owner, and we will only provide the property owner's contact information to a developer if they have given us the go-ahead to do that. Planning and Development Services staff meets with property owners and developers, trying to discuss potential redevelopment opportunities whenever they contact us. We are obviously pro-redeveloping the downtown. But staff does not recommend preparing conceptual layouts and site layouts for privately-owned properties until they've either asked us to. Otherwise, there's concerns that what we're saying is we're planning on purchasing their property, demolishing what they have, and it kind of creates a fear. So, that's why staff has not done that for the one Site A, the Cartland Building, just because that property owner has indicated that's not something they're interested in doing. So, the village board next steps is kind of identifying which opportunity sites should be prioritized in conjunction with the platform. It sounds like you're kind of okay with everything that staff's already recommended.
I think we've done that one, Kristi.
Yes. And then, just, we just would have to have the Plata subdivision prepared to resub the Bartlett municipal lots, and then want to make sure this is something that you're all thinking about as we move forward in doing, working on the capital budget. This all kind of goes hand in hand together.
Long does it take to resubdivide?
It would just have to go through the village board process, zoning approval, so it would, about four months.
Very good. Very informative.
Is that it?
That is it.
You got enough direction?
I have enough direction.
All right, good.
Thank you. That's all I have to make.
Thank you, Chairman Gunstein. Public Works and Golf Committee Chairman Dany?
Thank you, Mr. President. First item on the agenda is the asset management presentation, and I'm going to let Tyler and Nick move forward with this.
All right. I'll get it started, and then I'll hand it over to Tyler, Nick, and we actually have Kelvin, who is with Waterworth. He's online remote. We'll have him cover some of the slides as well. Waterworth is a program that we've been using the last few years on our water and sewer side to help us do some programming and rate studying.
Can you move one of those microphones over by you, or is there one?
Is that on?
Okay.
So, Kelvin is with Waterworth, which is a software we've been using the last few years, looking at our water and sewer rates. It helps us do budget planning and that, so he'll cover some of that. Assets, what is an asset? If you look at the Village of Bartlett and what you as the board and us as staff need to maintain for the residents of Bartlett, we've got the big ones, roads, water mains, sewers, our buildings, water towers, wastewater treatment plant, pump stations, lift stations. All those things all have a, have to be maintained. Bartlett Hills, we also have. So, all those things, you know, when we start developing a capital improvement program, we're looking at those things. And I know over the last several months, we've been getting questions like, how do you decide which mains to replace, which roads to do and that? So, we thought, prior to going to the capital improvement review next meeting, we thought we would start with a, kind of a, look at assets, kind of how we evaluate them, and then how we put a value and proceed with that. So, that's kind of where we're at. And I'm going to hand it over to Tyler, who will give us some information on assets.
All right. Thanks, Dan. So, yeah, this is, this slide here is exactly that. It's a snapshot of our current existing village assets as they are today. As you can see, we own quite a bit. Currently, we own approximately $2 billion in infrastructure. Now, that doesn't include vehicles, equipment, facilities, things like that. That is just the individual items or miles of main, road, et cetera. And so, these are the items that only we have to maintain, but future generations are also going to have to maintain, and our goal is to always leave it better than when we found it. So, because there is a lot, we're going to cover the big three of roads, water main, and sewer main.
Thanks, Tyler. All right. So, currently, the Village of Bartlett, we own and maintain approximately 150 miles of roadway, 208 miles of water main, and 167 miles of sewer. So, I'm going to explain a little bit as to what we, what our process is for maintaining all three of those. So, when it comes to the roadways, we use what is called the PCI, which stands for the Pavement Conditions Index. It's a rating system of 0 to 100. We get our roads scanned every few years, and based on those ratings, it kind of sends us into the area that we're going to resurface, and we plan accordingly. So, the source of that, our typical resurfacing project, the source of funds is the motor fuel tax dollars. Annually, we receive about $1.8 million. Over the past few years, we have been alternating those water and road projects. So, you know, each year, our projects, our road projects are about three, works out to about $3.5 million. Gets us about eight miles worth of resurfaced roads. Similarly, for the water, the 208 miles that we maintain, how we decide where our next project is going to be depends on the amount of breaks that we have in an area, our high lead areas. We're trying to knock out all those lead services, so we can even figure out projects to kind of marry the two together. We try to do that as well. The amount that we receive annually varies. This last one was about $3.6 million, and with that money, we're able to get about two miles of eight-inch water main replacement. On the sewer side, with 167 miles of sewer that we maintain, how we decide what we line, we line our clay areas. We have run analysis from our consultants that monitors the INI, which is the inflow and infiltration, which is essentially just extra water that enters the system that we're treating that doesn't need to be treated. It's mainly storm water. The amount that we receive annually, it also varies, and right now, we're about half a million dollars, which gets us around two miles of lining per project. So, when we talk about maintaining our assets, we also have to talk about life cycles. So, the expected life cycle of those three assets here, roads, you know, we assume, we try to get 20 years out of our roads. We crack seal, we put down pavement preserver. You know, we want to get 20 years out of our roads. Similarly, industry tells us that ductile iron water So what this slide illustrates is if we just took the straight miles of road that we have, wanted to resurface them every 20 years, it would take us about 38 budgetary cycles to get through that. And that's all theoretical, right? Assuming that Bartlett was built linearly, one year after the other, right? So there's a lot of factors that also play into that. So this is all based on theoretical numbers. What Kelvin is going to get into in the next few slides, he's going to get a little bit more into the weeds. And, you know, with his programs a lot more robust and it takes into account all of the actual factors of Bartlett, real-life data, and then helps with our projections. And with those projections, we, you know, that helps us in our capital planning, so.
With that, we'll hand it over to Kelvin. You're muted.
Can I ask one quick question?
Can everyone, hear me okay there?
Sure. What prompted this, this meeting about this?
Well, last year, we talked about asset management and we're heading into the capital budget process at, you know, our next meeting. We're going to do the capital budget, so this is kind of an intro to capital budget.
Okay, so I'm just going to share my screen here. Okay, so what I've got on my screen right now is what we have, is it's a projection of an annual asset replacement schedule. Each one of these bars on the screen represents a year and represents a number of assets that need to be replaced. What we have in this model right now is simply mains. So right now, I'm looking at the water mains and I can switch over to the sewer mains. And what we find is that, and I'll start with water, but what we find is that doing a quick analysis of the entire inventory of mains in when they're installed, what their pipe material is and diameter is, we can give a good estimation of when this main is going to start to fail. That's when you're going to see essentially your main breaks and things that cause kind of reactionary asset management. And the goal here is to overall promote a more proactive asset management approach and philosophy. And so what I can see here on this screen, just by looking and loading in the water mains on the very left here, you can see that it started in 2022 is when we updated this data originally. $5 million, approximately $5 million in today's dollars of pipe in the ground right now, it's underground in Bartlett, is beyond its estimated service life. And so it's, could be treated as more of a liability than an asset at this point. These are the ones that you're going to see main breaks happening in and that could cause any other issues that you might see. And any year in which you're not going to be proactively reinvesting in upcoming pipe replacement, you're going to be growing what we call this backlog. So typically, this isn't, this isn't something new. This is what we see with most communities. Over the past decades, there hasn't really been enough funding in water and wastewater utilities. And so choices have to be made about pipes that things still work and so we're going to keep them in the ground, replace it, kick the can down the road a little bit. But what we find is that these backlogs are starting to grow. And once we actually look at a long-term vision, what we see is beyond your planning horizon, you're going to start to see beyond 28, 29, you're going to see more and more of these pipes. And most of this is pipes that were installed in the 70s, 80s, 90s that are going to start to begin to fail. And if you're not going to be replacing these or investing in this accurately enough, you're going to see that backlog continue to grow. And as you look even farther, you know, into our kids and grandkids' life here, you can see that these mountains are really going to grow. And if you look even farther into the future, 100 years from now, that's when you see it starts to grow again. That these pipes that we've replaced, all of a sudden in the ground, they're only going to last so long and then they're going to need to be replaced again. On the sewer side, what you see is essentially the same thing. There's maybe a little bit extra life in sewers because they don't have that force within the mains to be actually requiring, maybe you're going to see less breaks or the pipes might actually last longer and you can do things like line them, which will extend their estimated service life. But you do see again, you've got a backlog of pipes that probably are in the ground that you might want to address, especially before these large mountains for our kids and grandkids start to happen. So this dotted line here represents what we call an annual cost of sustainable ownership. So just looking at these mains and, you know, other things have been mentioned in this, in this meeting already today, things like water towers, things like pump stations, storage tanks. These are all additional assets that need to be considered. This is, right now, we're just looking at mains. But just looking at mains, Waterworth is suggesting if you were to contribute an annual cost of sustainable ownership, either proactively replacing pipe or contributing to reserves that are going to grow and help for these mountains for our kids and grandkids in the future, that you'd reach a sustainable level. So it's showing about $1.7 million annually on the sewer side. And on the water side, it's showing about $2.6 million annually, specifically just on main replacement. That's basically all I have to show today. Does anybody have any questions about what they're seeing here?
I'm confused on how you're breaking this between water and sewer on the same slide.
It's, this is, this is the sewer slide. If he goes back to the other one, it's the water slide. They're, basically what these are showing is the life of the water main and the sewers and the growth that Bartlett had in the 70s, 80s, 90s, that eventually all that stuff needs to be replaced. And the discussion today is start preparing now so that you're not, you know, we talk about lowering sewer and water rates. We're trying to stabilize sewer and water rates so that we don't have to do major increases when that growth that hit comes due. That's the point behind this whole thing, is to do a little bit of planning now because the 2030 is not that far away. And that's when it starts to really ramp up. And, you know, if we don't start doing something now and we could expect either we have to do a lot more replacements or we should expect more main breaks, more sewer issue, those type of things. So it really gets down to a level of service and Tyler will touch base on level.
We need to put some money aside now for when the water heater breaks down the road.
Kind of like if you own a home, it's the same type.
So it's maintenance, it's budget.
And so while we get that up and running. So thank you Kelvin, that was very thorough and informative, do appreciate it. And so now we kind of dovetail that into levels of service. And so when we say levels of service, you know, what do we even mean? So that's a goal or a standard set by the Village Board saying, we want our roads to be like this, or we want to replace water main or sewer main at this level. And so on the water main and sewer side, it's a little harder to see because it's underground. But typically, a level of service would be, you know, you don't want major water main breaks. That is a very dramatic picture of one on the bottom there, but I figured it covered the point. And then the other one would be on the sewer side, you know, you're preventing those basement backups, those sewer surcharges into the street or paying for treatment that you shouldn't be paying for. The more easily to see one is on roads. And like Nick said with PCI and we get that checked. So this is an example, real-life pictures of Bartlett, like different roads in Bartlett rated different ways. And if anyone's interested in actually going out and seeing these, we're happy to take it, just let us know. So our current average is 72 as far as the PCI rating goes across the village, which is actually anywhere between 71 and 85 is considered satisfactory or good. So we are, we're in that good range right now. So we want to make sure we maintain that for the future. Because once you hit below 70, it really starts to drop. So if there are no further questions on that.
So if we were to put the money aside for a rainy day, how much money are we talking and where's that money come from?
$2.625 for one side and...
It's almost $3 million a year.
We got the baseline for. Well, I mean, you've got to figure out the delta, right? Because we already have a certain baseline of what we're providing. So we just need the delta to figure it out for the maintenance portion of it.
Right, remember, we were only focusing on three of the main ones. We've got all those other facilities. But it's just to get you thinking about, we do have a lot of assets that we need to maintain. And I think you and the public, the residents of Bartlett have expectations of levels of service. You know, we hear all the time about, when are you going to replace my water main? I've had two, three water main breaks in my neighborhood over the past year. Potholes on my street, you know, all those type of things. And it's kind of setting the level of service that is acceptable to you and the public and then setting a budget to try to meet that. Because right now, where we're at, I think we're lacking a little bit in order to maintain like that 72. Our budget with the $1.8 million from MFT doesn't meet the need to maintain a 72. So what happens then is that 72 drops to 70, drops, you know, and we start losing track and that's when the complaints go up. So what we're trying to say is we need to try to find, we talk about revenue sources, whether it's water, sewer rates, or general fund. We need to find opportunities out there to bring in additional resources so we can maintain and keep that level of service that I think we all demand.
What's the percentage, so if our assets are $2 billion, what is our, what percentage, because assets $2 billion, what's our maintenance budget? What's the maintenance budget? You don't need the number now, but if we have $2 billion, they say if you have a $200,000 boat, plan on spending 10% annually to maintain that boat. So that's where I'm trying to go with this. So if we have $2 billion in assets and it costs us X amount of dollars to maintain it, what's the percentage?
I think that's exactly what this presentation is trying to get at.
That's what we're trying to.
What's the baseline, where do we need to be, where are we at?
Right, so we can go back.
Lost out another thousand.
Is this a new way of tracking?
This here, this software is doing, it really, when we did our numbers, it's more of we got 200 miles of road or 150 miles of road. It's costing us X dollars per mile to maintain that road. And we come up with a value based on hopeful 20-year life. This is actually looking at when the assets went in, were put in and we started maintaining them and then trying to level things out and you'll put money away when things are not needing it as much so that you have it available when that big bubble, you see these big mountains that we have to climb so that you're, you're ahead of the game and you don't have some huge mountain.
Did we start using this software?
Just a few years ago, 22.
19 or?
We've seen, Todd has shown those same graphs. If you remember during the operating budget, when we talk about water and sewer rates and we'll probably have that same type of thing showing reserves and how our reserves start to decline and how, what we're going to do, I mean, we'll be asking the board, what are we going to do to try to avoid getting below our, you know, reserve thresholds?
Todd, what do you think? You know the numbers backwards and forwards on the, on the money side and then on the expense side. What are your thoughts? Not to mean to call you out, but you're the numbers guy. Can we put together a plan?
Well, I think what Dan's showing here is what the annual cost average is, you know, $1.9 million. Right now, we're spending $3.5 million every two years. So it's, that's not going to keep up with what this is showing, baseline of $1.9 million. Same thing with the, with the roads, we just, $1.8 million in MFT and it's going to take more than that to maintain the roads at the same level.
Do we know where we need to be? Even if it's just, you know, we don't need the premium, but we don't want it at the bottom of the rung. What, where do we need to be if we want to hit middle of the road?
Optimal project.
Yeah, that's closer to the 6 million rather than the 3.6. So we need to find a revenue source.
We need to double our money.
We need more MFT or something similar.
We need more runs of golf.
Need more gas stations.
And I would say one of our like ultimate goals with all of this is, you know, kind of the big why is more, want to take the capital improvement plan and marry that level of service goal that the board sets along with the strategic plan and then allocate a budget accordingly and not do it in the reverse, where say this amount.
Yeah, I think that's a good way to put it. So it's all reciprocal, right? So the amount that we're willing to come up with to put in the budget is exactly diametrically opposed to the amount of complaints we're going to get about water main breaks, potholes and everything else, obviously. This is the easy thing. You guys, you could have just read this one sentence, aligning funding and the level of service goals with capital projects. So the board says, okay, we want a service goal of 80. That's the minimum we want. And we want to align the funding at X. So you either come up, become more efficient somehow or find cheaper products or whatever, but that's what you're looking at. But this is prep for capital improvements. This is prep for capital budgeting.
Right, things that we'll be maintaining in perpetuity, right?
Yeah, and we've heard that lately. And then the last two months on this board, you know, what's going on with the water mains? They're all breaking. Well, this is explaining what's going to happen in the future.
We haven't even, yeah, we haven't even reached the peak of that yet. So then how do we keep residents happy without raising the water and the sewer rate? Because obviously, we need the money. We need almost double of what we're doing.
Yeah, it seems like we might have to make cuts in other areas of our municipality and not focus so heavily on one key department and take those resources and use them to fund something. There's only so much money and sometimes you have to make cuts.
So maybe we...
Well, can we look to, maybe we can look to our industrial area perhaps?
Yeah, I mean.
We have a, we have a study going.
We're getting in on weeds a little bit, but.
I do have one thing for Dan. Dan, can, I had an opportunity to watch a cool process in place and I've heard it saves money. It's called heat scarification.
Yes.
Can you explain what that is? And is there a cost savings to the village if we use that for our main roads?
Right, what that process is, is they, it's basically a train-type system where the equipment, one process is grinding the existing pavement up. There's another process that is heating it up and adding basically asphaltic oils and materials back into the material and then they put it back down. That's definitely a process that we've been looking at. Towns are doing it more. I will say I've, I've done it in my previous town. The biggest complaint I got was because of the heat that's generated, if you're in a big treed area, it torches the trees. And the residents complain about the trees getting torched. It is short-lived.
We have a massive fire and you have a really smooth road.
The trees come back, the trees come back. That season, they get a little, you know, wilted out, but they come back. But that's the biggest complaint.
My understanding it has a...
Play out by the road today.
Sounds like a big forest in Forest Park wouldn't really like to get it.
No.
You have to be, you have to know that that's one of the consequences of it.
But the end result is the same lifespan as a new road. And you're not disturbing the underbase of your road, is that correct? And your downtime, and your downtime is minimal because you're not hauling out.
It depends on how you're doing, it depends on how you're, what your base is and whether you have any base to fix, whether you can use it or not, but yeah, it's just an option.
I seem to look into it for budgeting. So, but we don't want to burn trees down.
So we need a total of $6 million a year if we were to...
A total of $6 million a year would put us at the 100% level, I'm assuming? That's fully funded, everything?
Yeah, if we're talking just roads, that's where the ideal number is. But yeah, it's going to be somewhere below there.
I think it would be helpful if you guys could put a finger on it with this lovely technology if you said, okay, if this, we can maintain 72. If this, we can push our quality up to X, right? And put numbers to those things. It's more tangible for us that way.
But currently, we're around $3 million a year in maintenance and...
Or road.
To meet the chart that the gentleman online showed us, we'd need to be at $6 million to keep it level. So, so we're talking $500,000 a month. So we just get rid of a couple employees, we're good to go.
Yeah.
I think we beat it. Good presentation though.
I like it. There's ways to find, if you start breaking the numbers down, I think we could find, we could, we can find a way to make it happen.
But yeah, I'd like to see the numbers based on, hey, you know, this, we feel as an organization, Public Works can maintain a 75 to 80 with X amount of funding.
You can come up with that.
Yeah, because it's, then it's, it's not a matter of, hey... Yeah, because it's, then it's, uh, it's not a matter of, um, "Hey, you know what? We raising the water rates just because they're charging us too much for the water or the sewer or whatever."
But if it's a combined effort of.
If you don't like this kinda service, we can have water mains blowing up all over the place and we can have potholes all over the place, but it's a reality and this is your proof, this is your data.
Right, and with the, the price increases that we've seen on just maintaining, like, it used to be a million dollars a mile for water main, we're closer, we're pushing like 1.5 million now. Um, so, when we see those increases in our budget basically has been pretty much fixed, that just means less footage of water main that's getting replaced, therefore, you're falling behind again.
And this all falls on the back of Bartlett, is there any funding that we can apply for? Because we're, we're, we're trying to fix our infrastructure, so do we get anything from the state or from the federal or from the EPA or?
We're always looking at trying to get additional funding. North Avenue, which is gonna get paved next summer, that's why we got the water main done this year, that's part of the Northwest Municipal, so that's additional funding. So, the more we can find and we're, we're out, we're trying to get oak on that same list, that's above and beyond that 1.8, uh, MFT. So, the more we can hit into some of that stuff, we're, we're always trying to find that money. Uh, water and sewer side, it's, unfortunately, it's more loans that they're doling out, um, so you've still gotta pay those back, but, uh, they're lower interest loans, so those, that's an avenue that we can look at, um, but, I mean, there's, there's just not as much grant funding out there.
How many people, how many people do we bill, how many people get a water bill? What's our, is it 40,000 water bills, so if we raise?
14.
13.
14,000 meters or 16,000?
Hey folks, let's, uh, let's move on here, okay?
Can I ask one last question?
Oh, yeah, please, one last question.
Thank you. Um, we talked about our long-term water solution and Burke Engineering did their study, did they talk about our infrastructure and what it would take and are, are we on par with that? Did they underestimate then? Uh, because I know we, we hit current targeted bills for one to three years, three to six years, six to 10 or whatever they were, so.
It was, that was more of how we're going to pay for the improvements to switch to Lake Michigan water. They did not go into a long-term maintenance of our system, they weren't looking at our system, they were looking at bringing Lake Michigan water to the village and what the rates were, uh, necessary in order to make that $35 million investment. We did incorporate some cap, you know, within those rates, we did include like the capital program that we currently have, that was factored in, but to do a full dive, they were not hired to do that.
Is there, is there a way that you guys could work together to come up with a plan that, where we could pull the funding, where it might hit certain general fund, whatever, at minimal cost to the taxpayer or show a scenario where if we paid X amount of dollars more per water meter or whatever, to come up with a plan, to come up with a plan? Where can we get the money? How could, how could we give you what you want that least affects the taxpayer or the taxpayer's gotta kick in a little bit in order to get the best water mains, the best streets, all that kinda stuff? So, to help, help the citizen, but say, "Hey, for, for this much more, you're gonna get this in return."
I think that discussion is something we've talked about more during the operating budget, um, on revenue-type things, but, I mean.
But do we impose a, a, a license fee when a new business comes to town, a water fee? Or, you know, just look for creative ways where it's a one-time fee. I, uh, for an example, uh, the national parks had not been funded for the past 25 years and what former President Trump did was, anytime somebody drilled or applied for a federal license, that federal license not only covered all the money that they were missing for the past 25 years, it covers the next 100 years. So, when a company wants to drill for oil, gas, natural gas, shale, coal, whatever, when they apply for their federal license, that covers the national parks. So, maybe we do something like that. I'm just spitballing, but just thoughts. So, then that doesn't, in, in former President Trump's situation, it didn't affect the taxpayer at all, it affected the businesses. So, just ideas.
Okay, anyone else? All right, good. Then the next item on the agenda is Bartlett Wayfinding Signage Plan, and Christie.
You got five minutes.
25 words or less, okay?
I think it looks great, let's go.
All right, um, so, the Bike and Run Advisory, the Bike and Run Plan Advisory Committee has been working with planning and public work staff on creating a wayfinding signage plan for the bike path network. Since we were already looking at the major corridors in the village, we also included wayfinding signage for mode, major roadways that we will incorporate at a later date, but we figured since we have a plan, we might as well incorporate as much into it as we can at one point. Uh, the Bike and Run Advisory Committee reviewed the final draft at their October 17th meeting and made a recommendation that the village board adopt the plan. Um, I am just going to show briefly.
I think we should put some funny signs up there while you're putting that up there, like Hawaii is this way, like 8,200.
Yeah, that's a good idea, I like that.
So, just real briefly, these are what the signs would look like, we've decided to incorporate, the color blue that we have matches the bland, the branding that we're using, um, and we wanted to go with something that was pretty standard for our bike sign, um, that matches the typical standards, but we did wanna advertise Bartlett's bike, wonderful bike network and so that's where we have the bike symbols on the signage as well.
Fantastic.
Looks beautiful, absolutely gorgeous.
So, so maybe some longer things, like this way you can get to, uh.
Our sister city in Taiwan?
Yeah, in Taiwan. All right, good.
Anything else? That's all we have.
Thank you, Chairman Dany. Um, with that, I will entertain, or I will, uh, look for a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Section 25C5 of the Opening Act to Discuss Purchase or Lease of Real Estate Property for the Use of Public Body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired.
Yes, go for it, so moved.
Second.
By Trustee Dany, seconded by Trustee Hopkins, with a clerk please call the roll to adjourn to executive session.
Trustee Dany?
Yes.
Gansey?
Yes.
Dunstein?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Report?
Yes.
Swansky?
Yes.
We're adjourned to executive session.